Recording in progress.
Still riding your bike?
Yeah, I was driving today.
All right. Come here, kids. What did I sign up for? Okay, come on in, kids.
Perfect. Okay, one more, one more. Just okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I'll be in touch with you. Potential. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you all four. All right. Okay. All right. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions that are listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. You ready there?
Okay, we received one public comment and I'll leave it now. I would like to address the legal and council staff regarding Rio Del River Bar and the strike. The last couple of times I've been down the river walking my dog with my young son, I witnessed things that are disturbing. Recently, there's been a vehicle parked near the Rio Del Bosho Bridge. At first, I didn't think too much about it, but after asking around town, I learned that the person in question is possibly a convicted felon. I'm not going to name the name. Just yesterday, I witnessed suspicious activity occurring which appeared to be a drug deal. Since Rio Del does not offer many recreational activities for citizens, the river bar should be a place where people can take their kids or dog for a walk and feel safe. I was excited to hear about the trails project and think it would be a great effort for the community. However, if people don't feel safe, I'm afraid it won't get used as intended. As a taxpayer and citizen of Rio Del, I respectfully request that the city council or state department to control the River Bar daily to deter illegal activity and/or destruction of the city's most beautiful resource. And respectfully submitted an anonymous concern to that. That's the only one we received.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to the consent calendar. We are pulling item seven on the consent calendar.
Consent item 7, removing.
Oh, we're removing. I'm sorry. I missed that. We are removing item 7 from the consent calendar. And I guess I can remove full item one. Five minutes. And does anyone else want to, like, pull anything? It's, um, it's, um, it turned into draft, they let you do it. But we're pulling it, maybe we're removing it, we're not pulling it, meaning that it will come back after a conversation. It means it's actually just being removed from the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve items two through six? Did anyone, did anyone in the public have any comment or want anything pulled? Okay. So we have a motion, if there's a second, we have a motion in the second, please vote. Motion carries for zero. Item one, I just abstained, so I couldn't vote both and abstain, so. There are motion to approve item one. Move to approve the minister on the May 7 meeting. There's a second, second. Please vote. And my name shouldn't be let off because I'm abstaining here, so. Motion happens three with one intention. And now we will move on to Staffer's Picks. Page thirty-five in our package.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. The staff is going to be requesting that we schedule a special meeting for this Thursday at four P.M. for a contract approval for the Eagle River Trail project. Just a formality to keep the project moving according to the original schedule. And then there will also be this Friday soft ribbon cutting for the kids at, for the Eagle River Trail, starting at eleven forty-five. And so all council members are invited to that. And Councilmember Carter can probably provide more specificity at the, at the member reports section of the agenda. With that, we are engaging in a officer recruitment, or excuse me, police chief recruitment that should close on the twenty-fourth coming up here shortly. And with that, no other updates for the council at this time, but staff is here and available concerning questions you may have.
No questions for staff, council?
What is the building that's being built across the border? Well, you have a, I don't know about you, man, but you do.
Just even a little?
It's sixty-seven. I see it going up, yeah. Yeah, so it's, uh, it's, uh, an improved, uh, an additional indoor cannabis facility there on the site. It's just a single-story development. It'll be one of, I think, three or four additional buildings right around that immediate level of the brown. It's all for the same project.
Yeah, I have a question for general. Was this and that resale building store on Ripley? Six seventy-three Ripley, that's part of the Davidson Ripley, where the old general store was, the rock up fix retail.
Thank you. That's it. Okay, and I would just like to thank Jeff for stepping up. Really appreciate it. It was unexpected to say leave, and so thank you very much for stepping up and filling in for us for four times. I know it's the deadline, but four times, thank you very much. Now, we will be moving on to item. Did anyone from the public have any questions for staff? I've been off for a couple weeks. Clearly, having my ass stowed, like, oh, it's supposed to be this. And so we will move on to special call items. We have two appointments of ad hoc committees. On the first one, I have a recommendation, and on the second one, I would be, you know, asking volunteers, but my recommendation, the appointment of ad hoc committee to review California Department of General Services acquisition of the formal Todd property and to advise and implement next steps, page thirty-nine in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. So the Todd property is, is located on the corner of Fourth Avenue and Davis Street there. The large eighteen, roughly eighteen-acre parcel that currently they've been bailing hay on for the past couple of days at the site. This particular site has long been identified by the city council and the community as a potential future area of growth and development beyond just a farming-related field or ranching field. And so right around the time of the earthquake in, excuse me, in, um, the end of twenty-two, State of California Department of General Services, which handles all of the real estate transactions for the state of California, purchased the Todd property, all eighteen acres for the express purposes of a new regional headquarters for the Delmore Humble unit of. So that current location where they're headquartered is in Fortuna. Relatively small location, older, much older design, clearly they need a new facility. So the state zeroed in on this particular property. And what, you know, the city has some concerns about it. While overall, any development of the site is welcome, and we look forward to seeing the site developed, which now appears to be a given. There are some potentially missed opportunities by the utilization of these entire eighteen acres for one specific purpose. And we've had some designs that show that the requirements for the, for the facility really can sit on easily eighteen acre footage. And so, you know, there are potential opportunities for development of hotels, motels, other business-type amenities, restaurants, that sort of thing, for visitor-serving facilities, in particular vehicles going up and down a freeway, that we think would be reasonable for, for the state to incorporate that. Particularly because that by Calfire, right, Department of General Services acquiring the property, it's actually taking out two hundred potential dwelling units out of our general plan and our regional housing needs allocation. So that's kind of a big impact. Whereas our RENA numbers were almost entirely met, now we're backsliding by about two hundred units of potential development. So there are significant impacts to the city, and I think the goal of the council is ultimately to maximize the benefits coming to town, we want to welcome them to town, and then minimize some of these negative consequences. So, you know, there would be a communications tower approximately under twenty feet tall place on the site. There may be active dispatch through speakers on the site immediately adjacent to residential community. These are some of the, just some of the factors identified in this particular development that, you know, typically we want to work through to try to avoid issues and complications from any type of development, whether it's, you know, private sector or public sector. So the state has been, particularly Department of General Services and Calfire, basically been not providing information to the city. So the city's had to utilize Public Records Act requests and particularly garner any information about this project. So we just recently, at the, at the beginning of this week, received some of the latest design plans and whatnot for, for the project. And again, that was through P.R.A., it wasn't any kind of voluntary disclosure. So we have a lot of concerns about the state working with the local community on this project to see if there's even just a slight compromise, which would improve the quality of their project and also allow for some level of economic development and job activity in Rio Del property. And so we have engaged and sent a letter to Governor Newsom and Senator McGuire to host a conference call of all the respective state agencies where there was a commitment to be a good neighbor. However, at this time again, the only information we have garnered through this process is through the Public Records Act requests by the system. And we don't believe that that's really good for their, for their project, for the community, that there needs to be a level of transparency and openness to discussion about potential shared uses for the project, which again, benefit everyone. Our, so the staff's concern is that the project could end up just being an island in the city where there really is no integration. There's kind of one exit, one entry, you know, straight to Davis Street and the freeway. And, and those are just some of the concerns about the project. But there's no question that Calfire needs a new facility. I think we all want to welcome them to town and capitalize on the potential offshoot development, potential, potentially, you know, new lunch spots, be more economically viable in the community, that sort of thing. They will have a two hundred, uh, two hundred-seat conference room and training facility. It'll have, you know, fourteen or so beds for, for firefighters. It'll have a major communications complex, all kinds of different app or plenty of facilities. It will become, probably be the largest job center or place where people work in the city once it's completed. So at this point in time, you know, because we're not getting a whole lot of cooperation through the bureaucracy of the state of California, that, you know, staff is recommending that the council form an ad hoc to really kind of steer the next steps, make sure that we're getting the community engaged and aware of this project and its potential implications are desired, again, to maximize the benefits and mitigate the negatives. And so that the, that the community is generally aware of this and, you know, the potential missed opportunities for itself restaurants, that sort of thing, that could be co-located on the site with ease based on the sheer size of the parcel. So, um, so that is kind of the opportunity here. So I think the councils should feel free to have a conversation about what you, what you see to, first of all, select the ad hoc committee, but then also guide the ad hoc committee with your individual view on it so that the ad hoc committee is informed.
Thank you, city manager. And I just, I think that one of the things that the city manager didn't point out was that it, it would be good if we could not, we're not asking for a lot, we're just looking for a slice of this property, but that it's seventy-five percent of our commercial land. Is there somewhere in there?
That's directly correct. And the, and the problem, one of the, the composition and planning problems for, for this community is that commercially available space is very, very limited, you know, compared to most other cities. It's primarily a bedroom community. And so the, you know, losing the commercial, private enterprise land for development is really consequential over the long term. So viability of the city becomes more and more at risk with fewer commercial, you know, properties available. Again, commercial can be mixed with housing, so, you know, a lot of the newer developments have commercial on the lower floors and residential on the upper. So those, those sorts of missed opportunities that seem to run counter to the narrative that the state government politically puts out of these big priorities. And we think that there's plenty of space to meet all of the needs and do it in a quality way.
Um, are there any questions? Right? Question? Any questions?
Let's have a couple of comments. For the ad hoc committee, it might be great to improve supervisor member because of course, RENA allocations for the city of Rio Del are going to impact on the county. We have the, you know, the tax issues, all of that. Plus, the county has paid lobbyists that can be used for issues that the county has agreed to take on or just order to oppose. So you may be interested in using that, and plus, it gets a little more attention on the state side. It's going to be really hard to get any attention on the state side, considering the budget. Calfire is a state agency, is incredibly risk averse. They like to dump it on everybody else for risk, but they don't, the state itself won't take on risk. So I would be surprised that they would be interested in any kind of allowance of other businesses on their property that they would own because of liability. But they might be interested possibly in purchasing some of the property and allowing the city of Rio Del maybe, or the county to purchase. Because that takes care of the liability issue that you would have there. It'd be great if we could bring in these other services, that area with the one and one on and off that's there. It's ideal for it. And we're excited to have Calfire come in, we need all that, and it's fantastic. But the impact of the community is going to be pretty strong. So we do want to see mutually beneficial things, and McGuire is a perfect advocate for it, but he's got a couple of other pressing things on his agenda at the moment, first year budget, you know, budget and stuff a little bit. But definitely try the efficacy, and then I would also try going as public as you possibly can about, you know, they're taking away our housing allocation, the state of California is taking away our housing allocation. Governor Newsom doesn't care about hypocrisy, but other people might. Because he could just stand right there and give to you that, but he's met the moment in this, in this time, in this space. But in any case, I, I wish you luck on doing that. We really do need to get something out of it. More than getting great fire protection, which is wonderful, which is great, but the city is losing quite a bit in that tax money. We've always eyeballed that site for something else. Hopefully, something can come from it.
Thank you, Sharon. I was just going to say I agree with everything that Sharon has said. I would really vote back to Sharon.
We work for the two big miles.
Yeah.
I think I would recommend Mayor Porton and myself to the ad hoc committee. I mean.
No, do you think that you wouldn't mind maybe trying to give a show?
Yes.
I mean, that's, yeah, absolutely, I can go directly. Do you need a motion?
I think so. Okay, I have a motion that we have. Mayor, Mayor Porton are on the ad hoc committee.
Also.
We have a motion in a second. Motion carries for zero. And with that, I would also ask the city manager, can you reach out to him? I can reach out to him. And what is the proper? Okay, and now we will move on to the appointment of two council members to serve on the NAST committee to work with the city manager on the selection of a new chief of police. Benchboarding in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. So we are in a transition period for the leadership of the Rio Del Police Department. In the past, the city council has appointed an ad hoc committee to, to work with the city manager on the selection. So that work generally involves attending the, the interviews, advising the city manager on their impression of candidates and the best path forward. And then ultimately to come back to the council at the point of confirmation to advise the council on your, on your findings. So the recommendation is just simply that, but this is also an opportunity also for individual council members to vote high on, you know, their view of what would be the ideal chief or what kind of qualities we would like to see to help advise the, the two individual ad hoc committee members moving forward.
Thank you, city manager. Um, um. Well. You know, I want to find first of all. I wasn't sure if we wanted to do that kind of, you know, I don't know if they do it as in the, at what small study level, or just can we do that?
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, I.
I've been suggesting diversity. I don't know if Mr. Four would be able to attend, and none of the things like, Councilmember Wilson would not be able to attend. But we want, we want to hold that meeting relatively soon.
Right.
Very soon. So, so the city clerk will work, work to find an appropriate time early next week.
Thank you.
Monday, preferably. Or, excuse me, Tuesday, November the fourth.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Councilmember Wilson expressed interest. So Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Woodall, or again?
I am the only one who has this, I don't think, I'm not saying that. If you rather do it, I would, yeah, yeah.
So the council will appoint Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Woodall. Is there a motion?
So moved.
At second.
It was short.
I second it. Motion carries for zero. And council reports. Mayor Porton?
Thank you. I, this morning, attended the co-ed board of directors meeting. Crawford is going really hard on FEMA officials right now about the thresholds that gave us so much problems and, and earthquakes. So that's really, really good to hear that that is the issue that he is at. So there's that. We have a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow here at three P.M. We have a beautification walkability advisory committee this Friday. I think it's at one thirty, one thirty or two. We have to check the calendar. So that will be here. The ribbon cutting, the Eagle River Trail this Friday at eleven forty-five has a lot to do with our trail stewards, and that is members of the fourth and fifth grade class. I'm looking for it. Who have been, there is working on non-construction coverage and education components for the Clean California Brand. Yes, at the fourth and fifth grade Eagle Prairie School classroom, they're the trail ambassadors, and they've been learning about natural and cultural history of the trail. So what this event will be is ribbon cutting to celebrate the beginning of the trail in advance of construction. And the students, the trail ambassadors, they're going to lead the walking tour. So this is their chance to teach us what we need to know about the environment and the cultural history of that place. And it's going to be very exciting. So the walk begins at noon, and there will be many cupcakes. We're supposed to arrive at eleven forty-five. I think it's going to be really, really cute and fun.
Want to get a change?
If the students will arrive at eleven, the invitees arrive at eleven forty-five. That's a student led walk is at noon with a ribbon cutting and many cupcakes, so. That will be at the foot of Davis Street and then follow a little hook up. As much turnout as we can get for something like this, I think is very important. Not just from city council, but from everybody. So if you, if you can attend, please stop by. If you're going to be at a top, say, now's a weekend or holiday weekend, tell people, tell people, get people to show up. Because I really think it's a, it's a big deal that these kids are going to tell us what they've been. Lastly, we have the Humble Trail Summit on June first, on a Saturday. That is the display conference that are in Eureka from nine thirty A.M. till one P.M. I will be there. McGuire will be there.
We will all be there.
So, but no, it's always, it's, it's a nice opportunity for Rio Del to say, hey, we're here too. We have a trail too. We are living in an area of outstanding natural beauty. So people should come see us, and it's nice to just be in these events and have our faces seen our faces.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Well. We have, we have supposed to do the H W M A sign. And there's another, there's RCA. We have, I'm saying we have another special meeting prior to actually RCA, and then this week, additionally, on this Thursday, we're going to do RCA monthly meeting. So that's what you're setting the budget for the RCA. That's from that one.
Thank you. Amanda Cupper. I need to go before Amanda.
That's the new statement between the meeting and the beautification walkability meetings. And we, we've got one project that we did last night from the beautification committee. And I wanted to say something, I was sort of about the trees downtown, but they, they look really nice, I have to say that. I, I'm happy. I'm a watcher, and, and, and she, and there's a lot of people that said that it looked really nice, so I appreciate the work you did on the ad hoc.
Wait till one year. Oh, that's cool, it'll be fun. And that's it. Thank you, and I've been out of town, so I have nothing to. That last Thursday, and yay, I'm missing everybody and happy to be back. I think that's it. Their motion, what was your, what was your?
What about item seven? You don't remember, just remove it. Oh, I thought you just moved it for discussion.
No.
No, it's false. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion. Second, second.
We can adjourn until noon.
Four.
Four.
Thank you.